On the planning board meeting on March 28th. The previous meetings minutes have been distributed. Are there any comments? Well, Margaret? Hit the mute.
I'm sorry, last meeting I had COVID, I fell asleep and I just didn't even wake up for the meeting.
You were really sick, weren't you?
Good times.
We we thought it was a student emergency that you were called in at the last minute, so yes. Any questions or comments on the minutes as distributed?
Just so folks know, I did distribute the meeting minutes yesterday and Paul had a couple spelling mistakes and stuff.
And you.
And I fixed them, so the minutes that I recirculated to their level of changes.
You want to move to accept the minutes as amended?
Yes, I moved to kind of do that for me.
Yes, you can.
I moved to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second that the discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye. So Gary?
Aye.
And Margaret, do you want to stand on this one?
I abstain.
Aye.
And aye. All right, now the treasurer's report, we're still working on it. We have not made any movement on the new administration, the salaries. So I would suggest that Margaret at some point next week or the week after get with Mike and discuss how we are and let us know in a couple of weeks. How we're doing.
Sounds good.
Planner, tell us what you got.
So as Kathy made mention, duplicate of notes tonight and then they'll sort out minutes afterwards. So that's what I was going to mention. Where are we posting the minutes after they're approved? Do those get posted on the town clerk's side of things? Where do they get posted?
Place here on the planning board website.
Okay. In the calendar? Like underneath?
Yeah, they have the agenda in there.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Recorded meeting is.
Oh, the recorded.
Is it the town clerk's office, right? You can only get it there.
I don't, that's one of the things.
Oh, that's a, yeah, that's a good point. I think as of right now, they're just being catalogued in Microsoft Teams unless we go through the practice of downloading it from Teams and putting it on the town's YouTube page.
We had.
What would you like to do with them?
Yeah, we had a discussion the other day when I was in here about the minutes, about the case because they all expire. Denise was also sitting in that meeting and they expire.
There's some familiar voices.
Oh. I sprawl, so you can.
The.
But, you know, so it's good to have the minutes they provide. It's good to have the recordings.
Well, but as far as I know legally, Paul is here. Paul is here. Paul on the league. Oh, you. Good evening. You're on mute, Paul. You're on mute.
Got it. There we go.
Excellent. The question is on, on, as far as I know legally, it's the written notes that are used in any legal proceedings, that they don't use the recording that I know.
Don't know. I assume the recording is, oh, you know, it's evidence. So they could take a transcript of it, I'm sure. I'm not sure.
So.
I don't know why.
But it seems to me we should probably keep both available for review at some, some place.
And make them accessible because right now they're not accessible. Let's come down and.
Yeah, Tom, my understanding all these years, and I don't, I haven't heard anything to the contrary, was that the meetings just had to be available. I think posting them online was even optional, encouraged, but optional. And certainly a recording is, you know, doubly optional. So I think we're, I think we're already ahead of what is, is required of us. But that, that said, you know, the, you know, we've got the meetings now, the posted online, which we didn't historically do until recently. And if it's easy to do the recordings, you know, why not? Even if, you know, one person avails himself to, to a recording, it's probably useful.
And if it says in the planning board section that where those are available, that may be sufficient. If you can log in and go into the planning board website, part of the website, and find out where these things are, that would be good enough for me. Do we have that? Do we know if we have that?
Well, no, I mean, what I would, you know, following up with what Mike said, and it's, you know, Denise said raises issue two. Is to get to that point, we, the recorded are not available. And so what was suggested is they put them on to YouTube. That way they become available to anybody who wants to access them and we can keep them. Because I think Teams expires after, any recording on Teams expires fairly quickly. And, you know, so I think, but if you put it on YouTube video, you can, you can keep.
I'd have to say no, because right now we have a written record of our meeting and we have signed copies of what we did or didn't do. If we denied a plan, we put in writing why. And that's, that's going to be what it is. And if we approved it, we sign.
What is the harm? What is the harm of doing?
Redundant extra work. That's more ways to make a mistake. Waste of time and effort.
And when, just from personal experience, when I was working on the preservation of the property on mechanic and bowler, I was trying to act the the recorded, there was a slide we were reading and it was not successful.
Were you an opponent?
What?
Were you one of?
No, I just, well, no, I was, I was trying to get what was presented.
Most always somebody that's doing it for the plan was an opponent, that's what they're trying to do. So if you want to make it easier for people, so.
We should have that. I just don't think they should have access because the minute should also reflect that. I mean, it's my personal opinion that people should have access.
Leave to the wisdom of the book. They have access to our written minutes and they have signed plans or a letter saying why we made the action. We had this reported to town clerk. If they want to know anymore, they can ask us and we can find the recording, but.
We can't though. After a certain period of time, it expires. I mean, what is it? Was it four months or six months?
I forget what it is, but it's something like that expires after.
I think it's six months. Six months, yeah, it disappears.
Think about that while I lose table. I may have to wait.
All right, as far as you go. Sure, yes. MB, MBTA communities, just update on that. Working with CMRPC on the compliance model that was pumped out by the state, which is a complicated matrix of formulas that they pumped out in Excel spreadsheet form. So we're playing with that with kind of hypotheticals to see, you know, it's basically plug in a bunch, ask you a bunch of questions, you plug in your answers. And at the end it gives you an answer whether or not what you did complies with the law or not.
Mini AI.
So yeah, in order to, you know, but it's obviously, it's a little bit more complicated than that, but that's in essence what it is. So I'm working with CMRPC to, again, just plug in hypotheticals, time being, just making assumptions, kind of refine it and narrow it down. And I was thinking, I'd probably bring that to the board by the 25th of April.
Is that right, bring you 25th?
Yeah, that's, that's not your next meeting, it's meeting amateur.
Oh yeah, I mean the second meeting.
Oh, yeah, second meeting.
The 28th or 25th?
Other than the 20th.
Let me double check.
Well, we are in compliance until December 2025, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the 11th and the 25th are the two next meetings. Absolutely. So that's what I'm trying to do. So anyway, that's where we are with that. The, as I mentioned, last time we went live with the facade program, there has been kind of limited interest. We did just receive one application that was distributed to the EDC. Had another that expressed interest. And so probably try to do a little bit more outreach on that to get businesses interested in that program.
Oh, you're outreaching. What's your?
They, well, I was going to have CMRPC collect all the business owners and, because we, the through the assessor's office, we can get obviously addresses, send out a letter, and then we should have a compilation of email addresses for a lot of the business owners as well and reach out in that way. Has been announced on the website, obviously, and on the town's Facebook, but I don't, I don't know exactly how.
The zeros are not the person you're looking for too.
Yeah.
Broadcast, yeah.
The one that came in, how much?
Oh, I think they maxed out the ask.
That's right, because one exhausts the whole 15,000, right?
There's more than 15,000 available. That's, yeah, there's, it was up to, it was up to 10,000 for a facade program and up to 5,000 for a sign program. So I think we had something like 30 available.
And Mike, it looked like it was, it was two per town, correct?
It was whatever, I mean, it was whatever we want to do with it, depending on the applications that we get. So now if we get a handful of sign applications for people looking to improve their signs versus, you know, two or three facade programs, depending on what, you know, how much money they're asking for, is what we can do. So it's, yeah, I'd say realistically, probably two per town. If it was two, you know, two facade programs per town, each about $10,000 to $15,000 posed for each, each individual business, then yeah, two, two per town essentially. But if we get people who are interested in just doing a sign, obviously that's going to cost less and we kind of spread the dollar a little bit further. But it doesn't seem like, honestly, the way that's shaping, I'd be surprised if we get any applications just for signs. It's probably going to be for facade improvements.
The flyer was a little bit confusing because it, you know, the flyer talks about only one to three businesses selected, limited availability. I, I think, I think the outreach might be helpful because it was a little daunting when I went on the website, how much, at least, you know, just looking at the sort of the list of what you needed to provide as part of the application, it looked like a heck of a lot to go through for relatively small dollars. So I think, you know, to the extent you can tell people it's not that difficult, that would be good. And I don't know if you have a a, looking for the, the most rundown facades or can, you know, can somebody that wants to improve what's half decent, is, you know, if there's a target out there, it'd be good to know.
There's no, I mean, there's no real target, I guess, in, in, in that sense that you just framed it as. I mean, and it would be as a matter, if we got a lot of applications and then the EDC could pick as to how they wanted to approach it, right? So if they got, if we had 20 applications, the, the EDC could say, oh, we want to target the ones that are in most need of repair, right? Versus it's going to be a matter of, I think, who applies at this point. Like we'll do, obviously we'll try to pump up the outreach and get as many applications as we can. I think it's just deciding how to proceed with the applications that we do have. And we probably won't be in a position where we are deciding to make a, a policy or a judgment call between who is in most need. It's going to be a matter of who, who complies the most with the application requirements.
Has it been any, I read the flyer correctly, I did what Paul did, I read the flyer and got thoroughly confused. It says that in preference is getting to downtown, but anybody on 140, I believe anyone on the 140 corridor?
Yes.
So can anyone else? Has any outreach been made to people in West Upton or all of that stretch? Or is it just the down, the, the EDC, which is more the downtown?
That was the intent, is to reach out to all those business owners from West Upton to the center business district. Excellent. Yeah. Oh, and for, you signed the fund of the, the A and R for 129 cells. And then there was a request, I didn't know if you wanted to take this under subdivisions. There, to refund the escrow for, I think it was Lobosir Companies, 149 Main Street. Oh, that's on.
That's a big complex.
Yeah, that's also ZVA now that I think of, because that was a, that was a plan of not, not you. So never mind, ignore that. That goes to the ZVA.
So like big.
Yeah. That's it. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. 141 Milford Street, which is, I think it's on the same property as Italian Motors or maybe right next to it, but it's, it's, I think formally they or currently sell, I don't know if it's like gravel or some sort of like. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's something like that. I had a, somebody reach out to me, they were asking if they could put a business there that, well, I'll ask the, I'll, I'll ask the question more generally. Light manufacturing in the C commercial and industrial district requires special permit.
Sort of doing, we had a special permit for cooks as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this special permit, okay. I'll look what that entails. But.
It could have been a site plan, but it might have been a special.
Site plan is where I'm going with this question.
The site plan is 2,000 square feet, tent parking spaces and things like that that trigger a site plan.
And also it says, makes mention of change of use in the.
And that's a special, that would be for, if it's a planning board, it would be the zoning board. If it's a, a use variance, then what it's on.
It requires a use, if the use change requires a special permit, would it only go to zoning board?
It goes both. Some of these go to both, where they go there for the zoning change and they come back to us for the, for the site.
That's essentially what I wanted to know. I want to tell you, I wanted to gauge the expectations of the board on that. So yeah, I'll ask that question generally and not specifically to that, that, that property.
Depends on.
For what it's worth, for what it's worth, Mike, the use variances are not allowed by the zoning bylaw. But it historic, it's been done since time eternal. Yeah.
Well, they give, they book special permit. The owner, the owner of the land can get a special permits for a use not okayed in the zone.
Correct. Yes.
I would, I would refer you to the zoning bylaw.
Right, yeah, just quickly making a distinction between use variances versus special permits. Those are two different types of applications. Use variances in most zoning bylaws are explicitly prohibited, not in all zoning bylaws, but I'm assuming that is the case here in Upton. Special permits are granted typically, I mean, you have special permits that are currently before this board, but a lot of before the, the zoning board. A light manufacturing use in the commercial industrial district would require a special permit approved by the zoning board appeals, not, not necessarily experience.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mike.
All good.
Lee, you said this is the, the gravel place that was on the Mattelians. This isn't Cook's. This is on the Mattelian land.
I think so. I honestly, I'm unsure of the, the ownership and the previous use of the property and the context.
It's right next to Mattelian Motors there though. So.
Yes.
So those owners are going to have to deal with Concom too. There's wetland right there. So.
Sure.
That one that has like home, home statues and stuff on it, like lawn statues, like that.
Yeah. Thanks.
Because if he made those himself, big difference. If he made those on site, he may be able to prove that he's been manufacturing or doing light manufacturing all along. We'll have to wait and see.
For sure. Okay.
What's the address of it? Is it 147 or 141?
141. 141.
Okay, so first we have an A and R for Grove Street, 54 Grove Street. They have added on the frontage of 190 degrees and shown the access for the existing lot C, new lot C1.
So going out of order in the agenda?
I am taking it out of order and we are doing A and Rs first.
Okay.
We got, we got Mike Dean near on the line if you want to hear from him.
Oh, well, we, why don't we wait and see, hear from the board. We're not happy. Any questions from the board?
Oh, yes.
Yep. Everybody had a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I can bring it up if you need.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Did we see that already?
That's why I like being here. Have you looked over your shoulder? You got a good idea of what it was.
If there's no questions, is there a motion to accept the, the?
So moved.
I'll second that the discussion. All right, any discussion on approving 54 Grove Street estimate? All right, let's take a vote. We'll start with left to right. Gary?
Aye.
And Margaret?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make that in Ms. All right, we'll, we'll have two signatures here tonight. You guys like to come in, just need one of yours or all of yours if it's nice. Sign us at the town hall, one if you can, the rest of the week. Is it Mike?
Yes, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, you can contact our Mike and let you know when available to be picked up.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your help.
Okay, so trying to suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and open up a public hearing for East Street Estates Defender subdivision. They've asked for request, the continuance to April 25th. Is there a motion to approve this?
I would move that we continue the public hearing to April 25th. And I note that the applicant has also extended the shot clock to that day.
That was my next question. Is there, I'll second that the discussion.
Which, which one?
The.
Continue until the 25th?
Yes, all we're being asked to do right now is to request a continuation of the 25th. And while we're in the meeting, is there, is there a motion to accept their request for a continuance of the decision?
Shouldn't we vote on one at a time?
Oh, did we not vote yet?
No, I don't.
All right, my, my, my bad. All right, any vote, any motion, we have motion.
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, any, let's vote on the request for continuance. Gary?
Aye.
Approve. Margaret?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
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 And aye. All right, that's five to zero to continue the public hearing. Now, I, I believe we should have also have a motion and a vote to accept their request to move the decision date shot clock.
And I, you know, my question is that, you know, I think David Brooks is on this call. I don't know if this is why he's on the call, but we've made a commitment to the people who live up there that stopped coming to meetings because they kept dragging out, that we would give them time to, you know, to voice their comments before we made a decision on it. And if they're just extending, so I think that we need to extend the shot clock. I don't think we just extend it to the 25th. I think we need to just, you know, to extend it a couple of weeks down past.
I, I don't think we can do that. We can only vote to accept their request. Otherwise we have to vote on, we'd be voting on it. And if they don't request to continue and so can extend the shot clock, we just look at.
Has his hand up, Tom?
Who does?
David Brooks.
Are we in the middle of a motion right now? I think we're in the middle of a motion, Dave will have to wait, we'll have to wait until the motion.
But then he can't talk once.
So once, once the motion is on the floor, only the planning board discusses the motion.
But we.
And then we'll go right back.
I would suggest that the, the town planner reach out to the applicant.
Yes, I will rescind motion.
Okay, we have rescinded the, the motion to extend the shot clock. But go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, we, we are fully aware of that date. I've alerted the board of Rockwood Meadows, so they, they should be ready for the date, but the only information we have is the plans of about a year ago. So if there is some up to date plans, I think the board of Rockwood Meadows would be interested in seeing them. I also spoke to the new resident at the old Amato farmhouse and they were unaware of any public hearing coming up. So I believe that's one of the Amato family, I forget who. So I think reaching out to both us and the Amatos now resigning at the old farmhouse would be appropriate with up to date plans. We've really been, not swiftly.
I reckon elections a little different. They were going to do that when they got close to the solution. Now, as far as I know, they have not gotten close to the solution yet. There's a stone wall or a retaining wall, but they haven't got a bid on or, or, or an offer to see if that ground is solid and safe. So I'm not so sure that April 25th is when they're going to tell us they can or can't.
That's my understanding.
You're talking.
Yeah.
I don't think we're there. Go ahead.
As I set the expectations for our community as well. If, if we can be kept in touch with when there will be a final plan for us to comment on, then again, I'd appreciate that on our behalf.
Right. My, my understanding, and, and we dealt with this the last time that they were in with us was that when they get close, they will let us know at a continued public hearing. So they could let us know on April 25th that they're ready to go forward. And they might submit things before April 25th, but they wouldn't be expecting us to have the public hearing where the neighbors would have a full and fair opportunity to look at the plans as they stand now. So they're, they're kicking it along and we're still operating in, in good faith that when they're ready to go, we are going to notice out fully to the neighbors. Just as we did the first hearing, we're going to, we're going to notice that out again. And that's, that's why, that's, that's my understanding. So I, I would, when, when it's time, I would agree, we extend the shot clock to that date. And I do think that the, it would be nice for the, they should have gotten this already. They, they, they keep screwing, screwing this up a little bit. We need them to give us a shot clock that goes beyond, you know, one meeting beyond the date of the continued public hearing. So they're not, they're not driving to the B Smith's house with a written decision to get it stamped. Maybe even two meetings.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm happy with that. If we, I've asked the assessor to record the board of, the board of the HOA here as assessors, as, sorry, as abutters. And whatever decision you take over what's fair to send to the abutters and when the right meeting would be, that, that's fine by us. So just keep us in the loop and we will, we'll wait.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Just a point of clarification. So what we're going to vote on tonight is to extend the decision deadline until the 25th, but we have no intention of taking a vote on the 25th.
Correct, it will be done all over again.
And so we'll extend it again. And so basically, David, you can tell your folks that you don't have to show up on the 25th unless they want to.
I would do that. I may show up or not. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so they don't need to show up on the 25th, but we should get actionable information in time for when they do show up.
Yes. All right. So would you like to make that motion to accept continuation of the decision date till the 25th?
Mr. Chairman, also, also, Mr. Chairman can also make the same request on behalf of the Amato family, whoever is living there now. I don't think there's any, no, not going to be here today.
Yes.
I would like add, oh, sorry, Margaret.
I was going to.
Margaret.
We had decided we would note, we would, we'd notice everyone, all of the abutters again. Step back up.
Clarification, the applicant is of the same understanding. I think they just neglected to ask the extension beyond the public hearing, because I have an email from them of the same understanding that if the public hearing is advertised for the 25th, they don't expect the board to provide a decision until the 25th.
Okay. Yeah, I think something else that'd be very helpful to, to the residents, and this has always been a frustration of mine, though I think it's a practice. If they tend to tell us the avenue of the people don't have the and I would like in this case, someone has something on the, they may want to mute.
Oh, sorry, I'll. That's totally me.
Um. But, um, yeah, it just, um, it'd be great in this particular case of, I'd be willing to make a motion. But I would like to request that if there's another extension, that we know it prior to the afternoon of the meeting.
And I, I don't, I don't like extending it to the next date, just to know we're going to extend it out.
I know, I know.
But we haven't, this is, um, we're meeting remote and I'm going to give them a little bit of a break here. And, uh. It's, it's difficult to communicate in this day and age, you know, with computers and everything. Would you like to make that motion again to accept the request to continue the shot clock or the decision deadline?
No, someone else can make it.
Go ahead.
I move that we can, that we accept the, uh, the applicant's request to continue the shot clock until April 25th. Second.
There's a second? And discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the applicant's request to continue the decision deadline to April 25th, signify by saying aye. So, Gary?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And I will say vote yes, four to zero. Four to zero.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that the town planner reach out to the applicant and ask them in advance of our next meeting, the first meeting in April, to get us a, you know, a request to reset the shot clock for the second meeting in May, so that we have.
He was nodding as he was.
Yeah, I figured he was all over it.
Thank you. So we're going to, uh, continue with this meeting till the 25th. Sorry, so we're going to adjourn that and reopen our regularly scheduled meeting. And, uh, we're going to, um, open up the public hearing for Governor's Landing. It's a special permit and they requested continuation till April 11th.
So I apologize, this was accidentally put on the agenda. You had already voted to continue this to April 11th.
Done? All right, discussion on zero, Westboro Road.
Oh, just one, before we leave, before we leave Governor's Landing, um, we, you know, they, they had asked us to, at the next time they come in, they're going to want us to have a, a discussion about their waiver requests. And, uh, Jeff Roloff said, you know, you, we've got him. I, I asked him specifically to get us an updated list of those in advance of that meeting. So I, I don't know, Mike maybe might be able to reach out to them again and just remind them of that. That if they want us to be well-versed in their requests for that meeting, that they should get them to us in a, in a, uh, uh, an easy-to-peruse format.
They did, they did list them verbally last meeting, so.
But if we could get them.
The writing would be better. I'll reach out to Jeff.
Because I just want to go back.
He agreed to do it. I just wanted to be reminded.
For sure. But, uh, thank you for reminding them that we don't vote on waivers ahead of the vote on the project itself. They all go together.
No, but I think you wanted to have the discussion at least without, without the vote. And you were right, Tom. We, we couldn't, we explained to them, we really couldn't do that.
Anything else before we move on to Westboro Road?
So do we have to vote to?
No.
Because it's just what we already voted on.
It was just a reminder to discuss. Zero Westboro Road.
Hello, Jen Thompson, Zero Westboro Road. Just going to hand these out real quick. I'm not sure if you guys got this email.
Just sent, yeah, this is all on the screen.
Hi. Jen Thompson, I've been up there. I got to meet Grace today too. So all these new faces. And then I got to the finance kajiyadi upstairs and I was like, I know some new faces, but this is, I don't recognize any of these. I did, I have done. That's okay. So Zero Westboro Road formally, um, lot 83741. Um, if you flip to the second page, you can see, um, the outline of the original property. And then the piece that we had carved off to the state was about 16 acres, leaving us with 11.29 acres with 241 feet of frontage on Westboro Road. And if you go back to the front, um, after the, um, back land lot, um, denial, we drew a three-lot subdivision plan. I know you referenced Bradish, um, at that meeting, and I had thought, for some reason, somebody had extended something on Bradish. But I came in today to just look at those plans and was unable to locate anything. Does that make sense to you, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. So you just were referencing Bradish in general. So this is the subdivision plan from you prepared by Alan and Major, the same, um, engineer who did the work for the state back last June when we met. And you'll see it is a subdivision road. It is two compliance. You'll see the three lots with the, um, the circle, um, where the house would be. And then there's just some boxes or areas where your proposed septics would be. We still have to do, um, perk testing, et cetera. Just wanted to get a feeling from the board that we're on the right track before we, you know, go further with formally submitting subdivision.
Um, let me go first. Um, it looks fine, except for you're, you're going to be asking for waivers. We're going to have to be asking for waiver on that. Um, it says 24, but, uh, it's a small, I'm not saying that you don't preserve any of these, I'm just saying these are things that, that are out of the, uh.
Is the 24 that he's showing is that the pavement?
Yeah, we have a 26-foot pavement. It's, uh, it's been waived down to 24 if, um, sometimes it's in the best interest to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as the, uh, the width of your cul-de-sac, I, I think it's 100 feet and 120, it's supposed to be on the, um, property line. And I don't know if that R60 means, uh, that it is 120 and a 50. I'm not sure. Might be, he might have that.
Uh, no, or it says R60 on the.
Yeah, it says, it says to the 50, that means maybe a 100-foot pavement, and the R60 may be the property line of 120 feet, so that may be good there.
Okay.
Um, it, it, the, uh, the frontage, um, on the top left lot, lot 1A, um, you get one-to-one frontage for every foot of frontage on the road, you get one. But as you go around the corner, you get like 0.7. You only get seven tenths of a foot for every foot to go around the corner. So, but usually it's only two houses on the end of the cul-de-sac, and you've only got two. That's not unusual. Um, grades of the, uh, this is stuff that you don't really put on preliminary because it's a lot of money. And the definitive, you're going to put on the grades because the, uh, the first 75 feet have to be almost level onto the road.
Mm-hmm.
And stuff like that, those are the engineering things that we'll be looking at.
Yeah, it's pretty flat out there.
Um, but nothing, uh, comes out of me. Members? Comments?
Again, as you said, it's a preliminary. I just, it looks like, I'm not sure that there's rounding at the end where, where it goes back onto the road. Um, you know, for, for sight lines, so the road's going to have to be flared out a little bit at the, at the end. I don't, it looks like they've got plenty of room, but, um, I, I can't tell from what I'm looking at right now. Now, it looks like part of the cul-de-sac is in wetlands. Am I reading that right? Is, and Margaret, I would defer to you whether or not, if so, if that's okay.
It's, it loo-, it looks like this, the, yeah, the cul-de-sac goes right up against the wetlands. So that may be a problem for Concom. This is going to, this would definitely be a, a conservation commission question because you can't really have pavement right at the edge of a lot. Without, without probably having some replication somewhere or something, so.
And again, on a, on a three, on three houses, um, I'm, I'm not so sure. You know, I'd want, um, that, that big of a, of an impact. Uh, we need enough to turn our largest emergency vehicle around, but, uh, three houses, I'm not so sure.
There's really only two houses that are on the, on the cul-de-sac itself. I mean, we might be able to pull this away with more of a hammerhead approach.
So, so we'd have a paper cul-de-sac and a, and an actual hammerhead?
Or an engineered hammer. We could have, it says in our, um, thing or, or other, as required by the planning board. The last sentence in cul-de-sacs tells the planning board, we can put something other as required. We could ask for an engineered hammerhead to prove that it could fit the biggest trucks and turn around.
Yeah, but the lot on the left might need the, uh, might need the cul-de-sac for frontage, don't they? As opposed to a hammerhead?
Good point. Um, and then grades on that, it's almost flat. You know, it's only a, I think it's only a 1% to 3% slope on that. So there wouldn't be a lot of fill, I think.
I'm okay with a paper cul-de-sac and a, and a, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I, I would be okay with a paper cul-de-sac to give them the frontage and not pave it to save the wetlands.
So that the conservation will have to have that if there's a, if there's a, a wetlands impact on a design, the minimum standard design, cul-de-sac, um, you, we would listen to a, a different design because it's only two houses and there is an impact there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so let's have your engineer. About that. And what else we got? Good points. Excellent. Keep going. How does the board feel about sidewalks on both sides? No. On, on lots that, it says lots that are less than an acre, planning board could put them on one side. And you put them on the whole side, they'd melt first. Because they're going to be called out on both sides. Yeah, you would only need one, one side.
One side?
Yeah.
I have one other question for you. So, um, I've had some interest in the property. I'd put it on just as kind of one big lot. And I've had a few people, Wayne included, this is Wayne Pardington, he's a builder from Grafton. And he was looking to build himself a house and his father a house. Um, and I had some inquiries from another one, who wanted to build herself a house and then potentially do the second lot on them, right? If you're looking at the paper for herself.
Great, great, well.
And not go forward with a road right at this moment. But she wanted to know, you know, provided nothing changes in the zoning, that she could not develop the road right away, just put a driveway to her house, site it on the second lot, and then come forward later down the road. Her, her sons are like in their early twenties. So she's trying to plan for their future, but we all know how that works out. Um, that she could come later on and be able to put together the subdivision road. If that is, there are a few people like kind of blocking herself on it.
Well, we can't, we can't waive zoning, so if it's, if it's going to be, um, cut up, it has to be cut up, stamped and filed. So at that point, everything has to be set, you're accurate.
Yep, the other thing, Tom, if they're going, if they want to go common driveway, I'm not sure it saves them that much because my recollection is we changed that to spe-, or town meeting, I should say, changed that to special permit. So that's actually a heavier lift, um, than a subdivision in terms of the votes. And I also think that the common driveway's got to be built to the town road standard. So, um, I'm not sure if there's much advantage to just going with a common driveway versus just putting in the road in anticipation of, uh, building the, getting the third lot. I agree with everything that Gary said, but, and, and I would add, I mean, we're, we're not necessarily going to, if, if you've got a paper road in there, we're not going to release the lot until we get the road built. So I don't think we would approve it as a subdivision, but let it be built as just a, you know, a gravel driveway. Uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't release the lot.
Uh, with the financial difficulty on a sub, on a subdivision road as opposed to a common driveway road, common driveway is, is, is shorter, I mean, is narrower, but there's still the same sub, still three and a half feet of this and a foot and a half of that, three inches of finish coat, and still.
Yeah, there's no water sewer anyway, so it's.
You wouldn't have full water sewer, but it's still, it's still, you're building it like a subdivision.
It's kind of the same cost.
Yes, they were essentially the same as the bottom ones.
All right, just wanted to make sure that that's, it's not a cheap road. It's a, a common driveway, it's not an easy, easy attitude.
So just a question, she wanted to take a risk, which I don't think is necessarily recommended. Um, and buy her lot and then look towards later down the line to like sort of develop them for her.
Right.
That's something that she could take the risk on doing, correct? So she could build, she'd buy the whole parcel and build us the new house.
Right.
And keep her fingers crossed that.
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes, or that it changes.
Yeah, but if she did that, she'd have to get a special, a special permit for the common driveway, then come back and do subdivision control. So I mean, it'd be two, two big processes.
Can I ask a question? So, um, let's just say we go forward with the subdivision, we get it approved. And they put in a, you know, a gravel road. Would they be able to get a occupancy permit on the one house and just not finish the road or be able to back or a, um?
The rule for the planning board is when a subdivision road is 80% complete, we will release the lot. At least to the point of the binder.
Okay.
You at least have to get the binder cooked down before the planning.
And they could release the lot.
Yeah, well.
But it'll still be a bond.
But it's probably 80%.
Yeah, that's the problem. It's, it's a pretty expensive way to do it. Because we'd be, we'd hold a plan for the finishing costs, so she's, she's not, you know, it, it's as if she spent it. Because you're not going to, you know, the bond's going to be cash secured probably.
I think her concern was more so having to pay taxes on, you know, three lots when her sons aren't going to build houses there for 10 or 15 years. But that's just, that's life, I guess.
Well, it doesn't change taxation until, um, it's recorded, that we approve it. And then 20 days will buy and it's recorded, so.
Right. I'm sorry, Tom.
Go ahead. No, the planning board is going to get taxed.
Right.
But if, if she just wants to put her house in, she doesn't have to worry about a common drive. I mean, it's just a driveway. She can build her a house, but she doesn't have an approved plan for the three houses. And as Kathy pointed out, she runs the risk that zoning changes. You know, if she doesn't apply for those, the, uh, the subdivision, you know, if she applied to, or if you applied today, you're locked in with today's zoning laws. If we change them a year from now, you know, you're still subject to today, which is, you know, to your benefit. We could change it so that what she wants to do isn't feasible in the future. That's, that's the only, you know, that's the risk there. But she could certainly build a single, I think. Is there frontage here? What's the, what's the, what, there's, there's frontage for one lot by, right?
Yes.
240, okay. Sorry, my eyes don't go that low.
That's okay. I was sitting here thinking, I need new readers. It's small print.
So yeah, she could come in and put a house back there and just live with the paper plan with no zoning, probably no zoning relief at all. And she just, you know, hope the boys decide to step forward with the plan and, and zoning hasn't changed to, you know, to her detriment. Could get better, could, could get worse.
Okay, great.
Can I just ask a question? Because my, these are not by real glasses.
Yep.
Um, I'm trying to remember back to when you discussed it last time. So where you have the road to the subdivision proposed, if you look at the map to the left.
Yep.
Is that where the house is or is that also under your control? The land to the left, right? And also, you're also God.
It's the land here?
Yeah, I mean, the land here.
Yeah, no, this, so they divided this from one another, I think, a couple of years ago. Oh, Housman? Okay, yeah, so he had this whole lot and then he divided it. Okay. His own family trust? Okay. Okay, so that's there, but it's undeveloped. Well, no, there's a house there. There's a house, right. And he hasn't built on this one yet. Okay. I mean, he probably want to come on with that cul-de-sac, I would advise.
But there's, there's a house on any of this property right now, right?
By Housman's?
Yeah, there's, if there, is there already a house in the front here?
He has one house. Housman has one house in the front. I don't think he's built anything behind since he divided that. What year was that?
Well, so where it says proposed building, that is, that, that does not currently exist, right, as a house?
Oh, correct, no.
Okay.
No, but.
If it did, then Paul's solution, which I think makes sense, wouldn't be an option, but if it's.
Right.
If there's nothing on this land, then that's an option.
Nothing, yes, no. Well, that was just a question. If she puts something on it, would it, would it prohibit her from coming back later with a subdivision plan that meets zoning regulations? I think she understands that things could change. with a subdivision plan that meets zoning regulations? I think she understands that things could change.
It's not.
Okay, well, thank you. What did you say, Tom?
It prohibits her from coming back, but there's no regulation that I know of that says you can't come back with a different.
I have a question about the curving. So it has granite curving, as you find out, is that a firm requirement? Or is that something that can be?
It's a firm requirement from the planning, what we've made everybody else do it. If you convince us that the town, that it's not, it's bad for the town, if it isn't, it lasts a long time, then we'll change it device. We make everybody go granite.
But if she is just doing a house, a single house?
That was more important for three, you can do something with it. Offer like, I'll put granite along the most of the catch stations, I'll put granite along the entryway, and then can I put, I put some straightaway, something like that, maybe you may be want to work out. Definitely with the plows are gonna be going around corners and around where our catch stations are, we do, we do need granite.
But that's only for a subdivision. Correct. So she's putting a driveway in, no, she's not.
It really depends. I'm just trying to get.
Yeah, this is a road.
And then what were you guys proposing for cul-de-sac because of the wetlands? A paper cul-de-sac? What is that?
Well, it would be, you'd actually put in a tee that the, could get flower fire trucks to get in and a truck to turn around in.
So there's like turn left back up and then like.
So what's on, what's on the ground, physically is gonna be a tee, but on paper, it's gonna be, you'll have your hundred feet of tape.
But you need to show us that that is, you know, to the benefit of the town and that you could, you know, that you could do a cul-de-sac there, you know, you've got a, you could get the three lots in. We wouldn't necessarily do it just to give you an extra lot, it's more so that we would save impacting the wetlands or causing more remediation. If you, you know, that's, that's how I look at it anyway, I'm just one member.
But you may get three votes to say I want a cul-de-sac.
Understood. Any other comments?
I just have a question, which I could always ask if you'd mind. You know, saying earlier about the cul-de-sac, I still consider myself the newbie here, with a lot of these technical details I don't understand. I understand why it's right against the wetlands, but why couldn't they move it away from the wetlands? You're talking about a border between it and the boundaries, and that's what I didn't understand.
There may be other engineering factors such as slopes.
I mean, why couldn't they just reduce the size of it?
Because of frontage.
It could, it could be tweaked, I think, and go in the right a little bit.
Maybe it's a little bit of a curve.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is going a little bit, get out of the wetlands and go this way.
I think it could have a little bit of, to it, might make it a little bit better.
Yeah.
But then you've got, you know, the offset from the road to the cul-de-sac. I think that could work.
But you might want to show us that you could do it this way and, you know, and it works, but just because you can do it doesn't mean that's the best design and show us what you think is the best design. But you've proved, you know, once you've proved that you could do it, that there's a lot, in my book, there's a lot more leeway, I think, for us to then pick the best way.
And that's what we're going to do, I can guarantee it, is we're gonna require you to follow minimum safety standards. And if those are, you'd be required to, whether that, just just look at what the minimum requirements are.
Okay.
You guys have a good one. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Feel free to get ahold of Mike and he'll pass them on to us and any questions you have.
Nice to meet you both.
Sign me up for anything you want. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is zoning articles submitted to the town meeting warrant. We've got two as far as I know.
Yeah, I just kind of left that on there as kind of a, a whole placeholder in time being.
My suggestion is we wait until the last meeting before town meeting, so that we have the most information to make the vote.
Yeah, you had previously indicated that you wanted it scheduled for the April eleventh event, so.
Yeah, I know, I have.
Tom, you were in the. So, yeah, I guess, both of them are gonna be. Both of them for April eleventh, and I'm gonna be reaching out to the town attorney. Probably it's first thing tomorrow to get in on both, but mostly the other one.
Still reading up on them? I'm not reading up on the five-member point zoning board, I'm not reading up on that.
There's not much to read up on.
But the other one I am.
Yeah.
Community center update.
It's open right now. I mean, you guys are awaiting a as-built plan, so we're waiting for that to come in. There were some ADA concerns with some of the design currently, especially with the playground, which is, I don't believe is currently open until that is.
Where'd they put the three spots? Did they put them as close enough? Is there a?
Oh, there's no issue with the spots, with the parking. There was concern of the, I think the side entrances not being automatic as far as open. So it's unclear as to whether or not that's even a requirement for the architectural access. I believe it is, yeah.
Well, actually, they're not moving the collection twenty-nine.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, the soft opening is the twenty-nine.
Oh, okay. The building is.
Yes.
Yeah.
APW is okay with it there, so is okay?
Yes, I agree so.
One question that came up, Mike, just, and this isn't a planning board issue, but a question was asked that couldn't be answered yet, was how are you gonna figure out who can use the building when? You know, what's the signup process? If somebody wants to hold a town meeting or a Cub Scout meeting or a, you know, whatever, an art show, what, you know, who's gonna be deciding and, you know, is, you know, folks ought to think about, you know, have that ready for when they do a soft opening.
Because Gary's book signing is gonna draw thousands.
Understanding that the library, that there was a system put in place, and the library and the senior center have first dibs. And I could just, Joe's still on the, I think Joe is still on the phone. And they sort of, you know, put the schedule together for how it's used and who can use it. I don't know any further details on that. And I do know that they're aggressively programming space.
You know, it makes sense that the, each, each unit that's in there would have to advertise or post their own hours that they're gonna be open, whether it be the library would post their own hours. That makes sense, or is there just, there's a one lock and it opens and everything's open inside of it?
No, they have the front door, the way it's built, if I recollect correctly, because you have the big reading room there. So you can go into the, the entry facing the VSW and the rest, and the door going into the rest of the building will not open. So you can have access to the community rooms without having access to the library or the senior center.
Excellent. There's nothing we have to do?
No.
It's just my understanding that they're gonna have like the soft opening on the twenty-ninth and they have a sort of a folk singer type thing, the library's doing the little book parade so people can symbolically transfer, and the hard opening is gonna be in June with, you know, the whole celebration and cookies and all.
Any questions on the community center? What else we got? All right, subdivisions or other projects if needed.
Uh, that was, nothing under that, that was, I was gonna bring up the Lobosir thing, but that's for a zoning board, because that was four big, so nothing, nothing for me.
I haven't.
Okay, after you die, I have one other thing I want to talk about.
Because I have no other topics reasonably anticipated.
I mean, just, the the town held its forum two weeks.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have residents come and look at the affordable housing, non-affordable housing for the, I keep calling it affordable housing, for the housing production plan. And it was disappointingly attended. And, but people who came were very interested in the topics and there was identified what type of housing the community wanted. And so that is moving forward and people should be aware of it because we're looking, I think one of the decisions was made was with the whole, I'm sorry, my brain is a little bit fried tonight.
It's the glasses.
Yes, glasses, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's the glasses, yeah, Tommy, yeah. Is, you know, once it's, once this is approved, well, we can look at it in combination with the MBTA community, and I know everyone has very mixed feelings about the legitimacy of the state's efforts to enforce zoning rules on communities, but the bottom line is the state has expressed a commitment and has stated that it's a mandated, it's not an option. So one of the things that we're looking at is looking at the combination of putting the housing in where we can do zoning, where we want to put housing, with the housing where we do the zoning changes to allow higher density. Something that somebody thought about, and I don't know if this is how things progress, is to do transfers of land, so if something is dedicated, if it's not de-restricted, if it's dedicated to open space, and I think people are referring specifically to the Coto Apartments, that it can be swapped out with other land in town that's held by the town, it's not in conservation, such as Stefan's Farm, which I think people see, the person I spoke to started as more valuable. But I think that's something else that folks can look at. And for my part, I'm also looking at dissolving, so to speak, the Affordable Housing Trust, because there were three, there were four people on it, me and Al Holman, who everyone knows is dead, and then we had, yeah, his spirit is still with us. And then there were two other members that are up to their eyeballs in alligators and just can't dedicate the time to it. And I reached out to them and they simply can't do it. So we're looking for three people to be on that committee, and once we have the housing production plan approved, we can move forward with how to increase the amount of affordable housing in town, so that it complies with the law. And it's my understanding, and I was gonna send you a long email today and things, I have so much going on right now, but it's my understanding that rather, if we have an approved affordable housing production plan, we only have to produce or permit point five percent of our gap every year. And so we don't have to all of a sudden come up with.
Goal is ten, we're at seven, or something like that?
No, we're at, the last time they did a census, we were at five point one.
So we're fired?
I think, I'm forgetting the exact number.
Well, there was, one forty-nine was, was not in this previous SH, but also our housing inventory has increased. So I tend to think that we're probably gonna be less than five point one percent, quite frankly, when new numbers come out, but it's gonna be based on the two thousand and twenty census and those numbers have not yet been released, so we really don't know. But the bottom line is a bold load of housing.
How do you get a developer to build houses for that cheap?
Well, the thing with the Affordable Housing Trust, and people can probably, Paul can answer better than I can because he's chairman of the CPC. There is number, there's money in that fund for affordable housing. And a number of years ago.
Two fifty in it.
Okay, it's two fifty, but you guys already designated, took it out of the fund and gave it to the truck, correct?
Right.
So, so they could be nimble and act quickly.
So that gets, that gets you one affordable unit. Yeah, it's tough.
Oh, no, it isn't the building. It's like, for example, if we do a land swap, if we look at town-owned land, then we can always do a swap, so we can basically work with the developer and say, here's some land. And this is what we want you to do on it. And I think there are developers out there that would be willing to work with us on that. Because A, it helps you become better liked by the town because you're helping us out, but the other thing is they're getting the land for nothing. So I agree with you. I think people always look at it, if you give two hundred, five hundred thousand to a developer, they can build, you know, maybe a unit if they're lucky with it. And, but if you use it as leverage. So there's all sorts of things that can be discussed. And, you know, I don't know what the hell I'm talking about right now because the committee has met once since I was appointed to it. And I need to talk to folks about how this works, but I think there's options out there, and I just think we need to get aggressive and focus on it. But one of the things that the people at that meeting really liked, it was, it was a cottage community where you had like, almost like a common roundabout, and you had a number of single-story units, like houses around it or townhouses. So they were single or double, you know, it'd be great for seniors that want to stay in town, or it'd be great for young families, and it would be almost like a community. And it wasn't obtrusive, and you could get like ten, ten units, you know, so it doesn't necessarily have to be high-rise, it can be really something that knits into the fabric of the, of the community. So I just think, you know, the ideal thing is get people excited about it, which I don't know if that's ever gonna happen. But, you know, to lay out some options for people and start getting this, you know, the committee, the Affordable Housing Trust reactivated. So if anyone wants to serve on it.
You just described, there's something called a cohousing community, or are you familiar with this concept? Everyone that, that lives there has a tiny little house. And it's really, we're of a neighborhood, and then you have a central house that has a kitchen, or a central building with a kitchen and living room space and that sort of thing. It's for people that really want to be part of that sort of a community. And.
And off the generation.
Popular again, and that might, you know, if we could find someone that wants to do a cohousing community in town, that would, that would go a long way.
Of course, you know, unless it's deed restricted though, it doesn't count towards forty B, so for anyone foolish enough to be playing the forty B game, it's a fool's errand. I mean, affordable housing should just be a goal in and of itself, but, you know, your forty B is, it's so stacked against communities like us. Don't even try to, don't even try to go for it. Just, just do affordable housing because it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, the deed restriction, I think, is, you know, one of the questions that someone asked me was, and I can talk to Joe about this offline if people want to adjourn the meeting, but is if you buy a house, affordable unit, or you buy a condo, you know, you obviously want to make it yours, you want to put granite counters in. Can you recoup that when you sell it, or can you not recoup it?
Kind of not really.
Okay. So it's basically a short term, it's almost like a rental, it's a short term.
Almost in a sense, you are limited to the market conditions of which you sell it in. And then you are also limited to the maximum value is set by the, I'll just say the state for shorthand, because that's based on market conditions, which is also based on the income, income caps that you are supposed to then resell as. So that dictates the price, so it might fluctuate up within those parameters, and you can recoup some of it, but you're not gonna, yeah.
But you're not, but if you do a renovation to get your bathroom like you wanted, or to put handicap access in it, because, yeah. So the best thing then is to do rentals.
This program's not received, well, surprise.
Well, as we, you know, as we've said before, Lobosir's thing there, that was all rentals, that's, I mean, that's the way to do it, you know, they all count, and that's the way to get, bump up your percentage.
But you could also do that with a community type setting, you just rent the little cottage itself rather than selling.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, what, twenty-five percent fall under the parameters, and are restricted.
Because of James Road you're talking, this plans, I guess it goes to the zoning board.
Yes.
Every month, to put in six units, sandwiched right on the corner of James and Westboro, I believe. And only one of them, because it's a house, there's only one of them supported.
But what we're gonna find is that developers like with the governor's landing, they put in a hundred senior houses, because if they went to any more than that, they had to kick in an affordable housing component.
Yeah, yeah, they reduced it intentionally.
Just so they didn't have to.
They didn't have to put in.
Apply with that surgery.
So.
What else we got? People probably hungry? Okay, well, I, I think that's it for tonight. I thank everybody else. Great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. May you journey.